I'm going to call this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Do we have a closed session report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. We have a closed session report with the retirement of David Caceres. The City Council, by a vote of 5-0, appointed Al Ford as the city attorney.
Thank you. I'd now like to ask a member of our local scout troop, Christian, to come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
That's fine. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Here.
Councilmember Lister.
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Judge.
Here.
Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Are there any items for agenda review?
One item, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, on the agenda, we put the wrong title for Agenda Item 8A. So we are unable to hear that this evening. We'll bring it back on the October 23rd Agenda with the correct title. That will allow us to discuss it. So unfortunately, we picked up the wrong title on the for the Agenda Item on the Agenda Summary. But we're going to continue that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all future or all further reading be waived.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
If any member of the City Council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that matter must member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should declare so at this time. And seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 2, Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Informational Reports. Mr. Mayor, we have no speakers for this item this evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3A1, Selection of Two City Council Members to Conduct Interviews and Nominate a Perspective Commissioner to Serve on the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners. Management Analyst Danielle Franco is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. The Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura serves seven jurisdictions in Ventura County, including the city of Simi Valley. It is governed by a 15-member Board of Commissioners. Each jurisdiction appoints two commissioners, and all jurisdictions then jointly appoint one resident commissioner. Recruitment was initiated on August 30th, 2023, and concluded on September 13th, 2023. A press release, cable television advertisement, City Focus newsletter article, and posting on an email notification through the city's website were used to solicit applications for the upcoming commissioner position. Twenty-one applications were received. To accommodate an appointment being made at the November 13th, 2023 City Council meeting, interviews are to take place by October 31st, 2023. Interviews are anticipated to take about five hours. Therefore, it is recommended that the City Council appoint two City Council members to conduct interviews and nominate a prospective commissioner to serve on the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners. This concludes the presentation. Staff is available for questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Lister.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for your report. I believe if I'm not mistaken, Councilmember Kavanaugh and I interviewed for that last time. And it's a very important position. And I only mentioned we had that experience last time. And I don't know if others would like to have that experience. I do know that 21 applicants to select one is not going to be easy. That's all I'm going to say. So.
Yeah.
I think I'd like I'm willing to share that opportunity with someone else because it wasn't easy, but that being said.
If I do it with Elaine, it'll take six hours.
Oh.
That's because we have so much fun.
Okay.
I don't mind sitting on that. I haven't done that one. It sounds like fun, interesting.
It's a meaningful position. I would be willing to do it, but if but Mike, if you or the mayor would like to have that opportunity, you're welcome as well.
I've done it before. But I'll do it again, it's fine.
Either way.
All right. I move Mike and I.
I move to appoint Councilmember Rhodes and Mayor Pro Tem Judge to interview and nominate applicants to serve on the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners.
And I'll second it.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3B1, Overview of the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura and Their Programs in Simi Valley, Presented by Community Relations Manager Linda Fisher-Hilton.
Am I on now? Ah, you missed all that. Good afternoon. My name is Linda, and I'm the Community Relations Manager for the Area Housing Authority. The Area Housing Authority is one of five housing authorities in the County of Ventura. There is the City of Oxnard Housing Authority, City of Ventura Housing Authority, City of Port Wayne, Nimi Housing Authority, and the City of Santa Paula Housing Authority. The Area Housing Authority represents all the other six cities and the unincorporated areas of the county. And we happen to be Simi Valley's housing authority. I'm very proud to be so. As you heard, Simi Valley appoints two commissioners to our board. Commissioner Deborah Lane is ill and tuning in from afar. And Commissioner Joe Pachowski is here with us today, and I believe he's going to stand. We're very grateful for the commissioners and their participation on our board. Our meetings are held monthly, and our board packet is emailed to the city clerk for distribution as is appropriate for your organization. Some city staff also receive our board packet per their request. And the board packet is on our website and available 24/7. Please feel free to reach out to the Area Housing Authority if you'd like to receive our board packet directly. I did provide some handouts regarding the Section 8 program. This is the data that's provided monthly to you. And on the backside, you'll see there's some more information regarding the number of vouchers and how they're distributed through the various jurisdictions that we serve. I've also provided the copy of our payment standards. The payment standards are the maximum rent allowed by bedroom size under the Section 8 program. Our next presenter, Carrie Sabatini, Executive Deputy Director and Director of Housing Programs, is going to provide you with an overview of the Section 8 program. So thank you for your time tonight. Carrie?
Thank you, Linda, and good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members, and city staff. Thank you for this opportunity to this evening to excuse me, to present to you. So as Linda mentioned, I'll just be providing a brief overview of the housing programs that the Area Housing Authority offers to the residents of Simi Valley. Sorry, pointing the wrong way. Okay. So the first and largest is the Section 8 Housing Toys Voucher Program, often called Section 8. And just a little bit of background of how that program works. Through federal appropriations at Congress, they fund various programs through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. HUD then divvies that up. One of the programs that they fund is the Section 8 program. HUD then sends those funds to housing authorities across the country. And those funds actually go directly to landlords on behalf of low-income individuals in the form of housing assistance payments, helping make rent payments affordable to our participants. So specifically, how it works is the Housing Authority screens an applicant. Once they become determined to be eligible for the program, the Housing Authority provides a voucher to the tenant. So that's the first AHA-to-tenant arrow. The tenant or the voucher, rather, is a document that indicates that they can provide to potential landlords that says the Housing Authority is going to help pay the rent for wherever they end up leasing up. So the tenant takes that voucher out into the community. They select a unit in the private rental market. And once they find a unit that they are interested in, the landlord is interested in renting to them, they would enter into a lease agreement with that landlord, and the Housing Authority would enter into a HAP contract, a Housing Assistance Payment Contract with the landlord, basically stating that the Housing Authority is going to pay a portion of the rent. The tenant is going to pay a portion of the rent. It's actually the Housing Authority that calculates how much rent the tenant will pay. And it's typically 30% of the income that their household makes. So as you can see, there's a three-party relationship here for the Section 8 program. And that's kind of the very high-level view of how the Section 8 program works. And now into how it works in Simi Valley. As of September, which I think is more current data than what Linda was able to pass out, the city of Simi Valley has 674 participants actually leasing units here in the city. They are utilizing their voucher to ensure that their rent is affordable. And as you can see, the monthly HAP payments that the Housing Authority pays to landlords in Simi Valley is nearly $1 million. So that's $1 million of federal funds being infused into the local Simi Valley economy. So now a little bit more about where the what are they renting? Who's renting these units? So as you can see from this chart, approximately 64% of them are renting one bedrooms. And cumulative between one and two bedrooms, that counts for 88% of all the units being rented. The households that are assisted by this program, nearly 88% are elderly and/or disabled. And going into exactly, you know, what is the income of these individuals? So the lion's share, 82%, are considered extremely low income, which means they make less than 30% of the median of all of Ventura County. So that's pretty low. And what that actually looks like in a household is a single senior making Social Security, and that's it. That would constitute an extremely low-income household. 16% are considered very low income, which is 50% of the median income of Ventura County. And that might look like two individuals earning Social Security. So when you compare these income levels to the rents that we're seeing in the rental market, maybe $1,700, $1,900, $2,000 for a one-bedroom unit, you can see that somebody who's making 20 less than $27,000 is going to make is not going to be able to afford a rental unit. So the Section 8 program allows them to rent a unit in this community that's safe and affordable for them and make it, you know, a stable living environment. Section 8 clients do have a choice of where they select to live. And the 672 of them are selecting the city of Simi Valley to be their community that they call home. So that concludes Section 8. I just wanted to highlight one other program that we offer here in Simi Valley. And that is the Pepper Tree Courts Apartments. It's a 36-unit complex at 1415 Patricia Avenue. It does accept Section 8 vouchers. The Housing Authority purchased that complex in about 2017. And although it doesn't have an affordability agreement on it any longer, we still continue to operate it as a low-income senior housing community. We operate that, obviously, by choice because that is the mission of the Housing Authority, is to provide low-income housing in our communities that we serve. In addition to purchasing it, over the past few years, we've also made considerable rehabilitation investments in it, nearly $900,000, to redo roofing, flooring, solar panels. In the future, we'll be doing redoing carports and solar on the carports. So as you can see through the investments that we're making in this, you know, we really want this to be a positive asset in the community. So that concludes the two programs that we offer in the city of Simi Valley. It's our privilege to be the Housing Authority for the city of Simi Valley. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 4, Public Statements. Mr. Mayor, since there are no public hearings under Agenda Item 5 this evening, Agenda Items 4 and 6 are combined, and the council will hear all public statements under this Agenda Item 4. Agenda Item 4 and Agenda Item 6 are the times allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order which a car was submitted to speak for this public statement, Item 4, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any comments, we can begin public statements. Thank you. John Lapper?
Mayor Thomas and City Council, as I mentioned last month, October is National Bullying Prevention Month. I enjoyed the stance of our Simi Valley Youth Council took on this most serious issue last month. I also mentioned TJ McInturf, the administrator of Facebook group Simi Valley Community Forum No Rules, Simi Strong Facebook page, and his approval of allowing toxic inflammatory anonymous posts that bully and harass adversaries and attack marginalized groups in Simi Valley. I bring this to the public here because the anonymous posts and personal attacks continue, and many here have ties to TJ and can certainly be influential in getting TJ to stop this anonymous cancer on our Simi Valley social media. I fear that harm will soon come from this most irresponsible agenda. As many of you know, I have been advocating for additional motorcycle traffic officers for three years. Thank you, Simi Valley Police Department Chief Shorts and Mayor Fred Thomas for Agenda Item 9A, increasing the current one motorcycle traffic patrol officer to four in reinstating the Traffic Motor Officer Unit. The use of motorcycles for traffic matters and as a deterrent are well-known. The benefits are numerous, but certainly it will keep our children safer as they arrive and depart from our schools. I am hopeful for a yes vote by our City Council on Item 9A. I might also note that on my social media posts, over 80% support this effort. Lastly, a shout-out to Simi Valley PD Citizens Academy. Last Thursday, I attended Session Number Eight at the Ventura County Sheriff and Fire Helicopter Facility at Camrail Airport. Fantastic equipment and personnel. We then attended the Ventura County Sheriff's Academy Facility at the airport. I was one of many who strapped on a holster, armed with a gun, taser, and pepper spray, and then put through many simulated events. Needless to say, having never fired a revolver, I didn't survive one of the scenarios as a suicidal woman in a flash turned the gun on me as I was trying to talk her out of her suicide. Although the couple of minutes of training couldn't possibly compare to the 22-weeks program of the recruits, it was eye-opening, and we certainly gained an appreciation for the split-second decisions officers must make in today's world. A great program that covers so much about our police department, Justice Department, and the support personnel in Simi Valley PD and the Ventura County Sheriff's Department. Thank you, Janice Agui, and the volunteers that make this program happen. I highly recommend it. Thank you.
Edgardo Galileo-Rivas?
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members. I'm here to present to you very crucial paperwork. We had Ms. Sabatini talking for the Housing Authorities. What a coincidence that I'm here. I'm a two-time war veteran, Vietnam and Salvadorian veteran. And I've been dealing with you guys with since I started coming here. I never had an idea I was going to be here. But I you have two documents in front of you. One by Ms. Sabatini, that the payment for May 2023 was paid. And then we have Sentinel that Mrs. Councilmember Elaine Lifter, Ms. Elaine Lifter, represents. And the gentleman, for two and a half years or more, since June of 2020, he's been gouching me I used the word gouching, by stealing money, trying to steal and stealing money from me. When is this going to stop by Ms. Elaine? It's evidence right there. Passed through payment notice to me and my daughter. And I'm a really disabled board members. I am disabled. I don't think you guys take I know Council Mike Judge, I know he probably likes me because I'm a two-time war veteran. And I am. But this experience started three years ago. I dealt with Huber. I dealt with a lot of people. I've dealt with Ms. Sabatini, who is just standing here. And she has helped me a lot controlling Sentinel and Middlewood Apartments, which the owner was born in Greece, Mr. Marcus, M-A-R-C-U-S, not Marcos. And he's worth 1 billion point 3. And he has this gentleman by the Sean Sentinel who's trying to steal money from a poor man who's a two-time war veteran? When are you going to do something about it, Ms. Council? Lister? When are you going to control this gentleman? And the owner?
I'm sorry, we're not able to respond, but you and I will keep talking afterwards. I just want I'm not ignoring you.
I want to let you know, Mayor Thomas and Pro Mayor Mike Judge, that's being investigated. This gentleman is being investigated by the Detective Department, which I'm super happy. That's what's going to take me to live in peace. And I've been here over 25 years. My family like I told Mayor Thomas, I've been here crossing this Simi Valley before it was called Simi Valley. When are you going to do something about it, ma'am? If you want to put it in writing, thank you. There's a piece of papers for you guys. This is no, they have copies. This is what I've been going through for three years with this gentleman. Stealing money from a poor, two-time war veteran. Stealing money from me and my daughter. You guys are aware of how much money I make. They pay 80%. And I'm not going to move out and go steal money and make 125, which the city requires to live in Simi Valley. to live in Simi Valley. That's what I read.
I have to stop you. You're a minute over time, I'm sorry.
It's okay, Mayor. Just letting you know that it's being investigated, and I want to thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. It's Monday, so happy Monday, the beginning of the week, but I wanted to share with you our ideas, my family and around a lot of neighbors, and we want to show, to let you know that, yes, we support the supplemental funding to the police officers of Simi Valley so we can have three more motorcycle officers. I know it is a cost of 139,500 for our three motorcycle bikes, for training the officers and for their uniforms, but that is money well spent. I also read that the recommendation of our staff is to approve that, and we hope that you will. It's a great enhancement to our peace and order in Simi Valley. At the last meeting, I was here and I listened to a parent, Mr. Edgar, talk about the speeding vehicles by Matera Elementary School. So I cannot turn around and tell Officer Shorts, because I'm not supposed to be addressing the public, but Officer Shorts, I hope that you will put your motorcycle officers in that area of Simi Valley and ticket people who are speeding because the lives of our children crossing that intersection is very, very valuable. The second thing that I wanted to talk about is October 1, LA County Courts implemented a zero-bail system, and I hope that we don't ever do it in Simi Valley. I worked with juvenile delinquents for the last 33 years, right? When they saw that too, they said, "Hooray, I'm not going to have to post any bail because they're turning 18." Even if it is for law-level crimes, right? We need to have people go in court in front of the judge and be accountable and post bail because once they go through the whole process, they will know that there is accountability, and they are not going to be released right away. The third thing is that I know that my husband spoke to you about this one, Mr. Rhodes, when we saw you at one other place, right? He talked about finding three or four motor homes at the back of the parking lot of Target and by Mod Pizza, and he was very embarrassed to bring it up because we feel the pain, we feel the hardship that people are going through. That's why they're in that predicament. We also understand that that is private property, and it depends on the owners to, like, regulate and enforce, you know, ordinances. But we just want to bring this to your attention because we have seen many different campers stay there, and I do know that you knock and find out the names of those individuals, but there is a big concern of knowing who the people are and how they are, you know, doing the activities in our city. So again, maybe our motorcycle cops can do a drive-by in that area and find out that people are there, it's not an attack against them, they're under serious economic conditions. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, Members of the City Council. First, I'd like to wish everyone a very happy Columbus Day. There was one thing that Deputy Executive Director Sabatini left out of her presentation, and I think it's important that the Council member, that the Council knows this, as well as the residents of Simi Valley. Since earlier this year, I've served on the Area Housing Authority of Ventura County as one of Simi Valley's two commissioners, and I have to say that I've been most impressed by the Authority's fiscal responsibility. There are several different, the U.S. Department of Housing ranks an agency based on its fiscal responsibility, and the Area Housing Authority of Ventura County has consistently been ranked one of what's called a high-performing agency. That's the highest fiscal responsibility that they can have, and so I think it's important that that come up tonight, even though it got left out of the Deputy Executive Director's presentation, because it's something that I know that the staff at the Area Housing Authority is very proud of, and it's something that the residents of Simi Valley and our Simi Valley City Council should be proud of. So they're being a very good steward of the money that they do receive, and so I just wanted to make sure everybody knew about that tonight, and thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last speaker. Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 4A, City Council Comments Regarding Public Statement.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to everybody who came out to speak tonight. It takes something to come down here and speak your piece in front of an audience, and so thank you for doing that. Ms. Johnson, we did talk about the motor home and camper issue, and I know that this is a known group and placement for us. Is there a way we can get some sort of a feedback on that that we could provide?
I can tell you that the Police Officer, Police Department is working on that. They're aware of the issue, they're working on that issue, and it's not, we're aware and it's not being ignored.
And Mr. Pachowski, I look forward to actually picking your brain a little bit later on the Area Housing Authority. I had no idea there were so many vouchers, almost 30% of the vouchers of Ventura County are here in Simi, and if that's a great program, what do we need to do to help it out? And I also wanted to see a plot map to see where these all were in Simi. So it was a very informative presentation, and I'm glad you're on the Housing Authority representing us. Mr. Mayor, that's the end of my comments.
Councilmember Lister?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank all those who chose to come and speak this evening, and Mr. Lapper, I know that there is a problem when there's anonymity on social media, and so I would hope that whoever has influence in that arena could maybe encourage, certainly not to use anonymity in instances. Mr. Rivas, I know he's left, but I would like to articulate that I have spoken with him at length and have made some inquiries about his circumstance and will continue to do so, and so I do appreciate that he's coming here, and I'm concerned about his circumstances and will continue, and I do have some further information to provide him, which I will be emailing to him. Ms. Johnson, thank you for all you do and for being here and your perspective. We appreciate it. And actually, Mr. Pachowski, I did want to thank you for your service on the American, on the Area Housing Authority. I recognize that that is time out of your schedule, and much appreciated for your efforts there, and I was actually sorry we didn't have a chance to ask some questions after that report. I did have a few, but I think I will direct them towards you, and all will be well. So, thank you, that's it. Appreciate it, Mayor.
Councilmember Kepita?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, thank you all for coming out and speaking. We appreciate hearing everything. I'm glad you enjoyed the Citizens Academy. I took that, and I speak of that often, and it's always a good time, yes. I'll be there next week, exactly. And Ms. Johnson, thank you. I also had somebody mention to me the motor homes back there, and I was going to bring it forward, so thank you for bringing that up. And Joe, we're always happy with having you involved. And I just want to say thank you to all our scouts out there. Best of luck to all of you. Thanks for joining us. My nephew is an Eagle Scout, and I know that's one of the things you guys attain or want to attain, and he utilizes it every day in the Army as a master, excuse me, Sergeant First Class in the 82nd Airborne, which is where Commander Lou was from, too. So just wanted to give you guys a shout-out. Thank you for coming out here tonight.
Mayor Podemchich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you for everybody coming out and speak. I want to say thank you for all the scouts being here. I hope this helps you get the merit badge you're looking for. It doesn't put you to sleep or anything like that, because this can get pretty dry. On the subject of the motor officers, there was never anybody that was actively subduing the motor officer program in the city of Simi Valley. We had revamped it because we have to have proper training for motor officers. I'm just making sure that that's on the record. Something didn't happen. Thank you.
And thank you, everybody. Yeah, regarding the motor homes, I actually just got an update earlier this evening on that, so I know that we are working on that. I also wanted to thank the scouts for being here. I happen to be one of those Eagle Scouts, so it means a lot to me. And everyone else that spoke tonight, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 7, the Consent Calendar, and there are no resolutions for your consideration this evening.
I move to approve the consent calendar. Well, I wasn't fast enough. Can I just ask a quick question about number one? Could you modify that to two and three, approval, possibly? Friendly amendment?
I move to approve consent items two and three.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, go ahead and discuss item one.
Thank you, Mayor. Since much of our conversation is going to be about all the good things the police force is doing, item one deals with grants that we're receiving for the STEP program and the TRIP program. My question was actually one about the e-citations and the funds that we are receiving to implement that program. And as I read the report, it means that tickets that are issued will be now electronically produced and printed? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, that's our goal.
That's your goal. And so my question was one of coverage. Does that, it didn't look like much money to cover the whole program. Is that for just certain officers? Is it for?
Yes, so the grant only covers our Traffic Bureau. Is it on? The grant only covers our Traffic Bureau. But the way the software system works itself out is it's a licensing issue, so it actually, what we're getting, it covers the entire Police Department. Our limitation is the printers. So we think of it this way. Our grant will cover our Traffic Bureau, and it'll kind of run like a pilot program, except will be, you know, a fully funded traffic enforcement. That's where a lot of our tickets come from, anyway. So once we get that handled, we'll probably be seeking some other funding source to get the printers for the rest of the agency at some future time.
And so are these printers, then, that are mounted within the patrol cars so that if someone were to stop you for citation, instead of handwriting it, they quickly type it, and then you get a printout? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, that's correct. As a matter of fact, I have a sample here if you'd like to see it. Ventura County Sheriff's Department is using this same document, same software, same printer.
So there's no excuse, it's illegible, and so, not that I've ever used that excuse.
So filling out the ticket this way, does that then automatically enter it into the system?
Yeah, so I don't want to get too technical on this, but yes, ultimately, it's retained in two data systems, one in the citation system and one in our records management system. But the process actually increases our efficiency exponentially, like, less time writing the citation out in the field because all the data is pre-filled. It's higher accountability, like, we don't have illegible citations anymore, because that is kind of an issue. Officers sometimes write sloppy, and the courts can't read it. We don't know what they've written, and there's that. And then, finally, the speed and efficiency will actually allow us to, you know, be in the field more, driving around, looking for a greater number of violators if they're out there. So it's a good thing all the way around.
I can see the benefit. I know later on this agenda, we're going to be discussing patrol officer, motorcycle officers. Is something mounted on a motorcycle as well? Is that?
I do believe there's a solution for a motor officer as well, and motor officers, that is their primary function, so it wouldn't make sense to not, you know, field them with a, with an electronic citation solution.
Interesting. Okay, well, thank you. I just wanted to have that discussion.
If I could get that citation.
Oh, wait. I just passed it down with all my colleagues.
I've never seen anything like this before.
We'll have to verify that, Councilmember.
Thank you for answering. If there are no other questions, I would move that we approve item one on the consent calendar.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, as City Manager Gabriel stated, Item 8A has been continued to the meeting of October 23rd. Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 9A, Approval of Supplemental Budget Request for Fund 100 to Fund Training Costs and the Purchase of Motor Officer Uniform Gear and Protective Equipment and Three Police Motorcycles for Three Motor Officers to Reinstate the Traffic Motor Officer Unit. Commander Richie Liu and Sergeant Joshua McAllister are here to present this item.
I'm sorry, Richie, come on. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Podemchich, and members of the City Council. My name is Richie Liu. I'm assigned as a police commander for the Traffic Bureau. We're here to request supplemental funding to purchase motor officer uniform, gear, protective equipment, and three police motorcycles to reinstate the police motor unit. As you know, traffic safety is very important to our community, and adding three additional motor officers will increase that. According to NHTSA, the National Highway Traffic Safety Association, visible traffic enforcement reduces traffic fatalities and traffic accidents. So that's why this is important. Sergeant McAllister will be giving us a presentation on the history of the motor unit.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Sergeant Josh McAllister. I'm supervisor of the Traffic Bureau, and the presentation is just going to go over kind of a history of what our motor unit and Traffic Bureau look like in years past and compared to what it is now, and the changes we're hoping to make by adding more motor officers to it. So a few years back, we used to have one commander, two sergeants, which is one motor sergeant, one AI Collision Investigator Sergeant, a civilian manager, four collision investigators, six motor officers, four full-time police service officers, which are the ones that help with parking enforcement and traffic control, and two part-time police service officers. Currently, our staffing is one commander, one sergeant, one police services supervisor. The slide shows we have six collision investigators, one motorcycle officer, and two full-time police service officers. So we're down a few positions, and that's why we're hoping to build this back up. So currently, the current motor equipment we currently have right now to use, we have three BMW motorcycles, two of them are year 2017, one's a 2019. One of the motorcycles is currently being used by our only motor officer, which is Officer Bowman. We have one spare motorcycle that's ready to be put in for in-service riding and to be out doing enforcement, and then we have one spare motorcycle, which we're going to be used solely for training. It's mechanically sound, but because it's used for training, it's going to fall, it's going to hit the ground, it has hit the ground. So there's minor scratches, dents, and it's just not aesthetically pleasing to be out there on the road and be using to do enforcement and other activity with. And we also have spare helmets that we use for training purposes only. So benefits of a police motor program, they can improve traffic safety by conducting traffic enforcement, issues of citations, warnings, which help reduce collisions. Motor officers act as a visual deterrent, causing drivers to change driving behavior when a motor officer is around or believed to be around. And even when they're not around, everybody knows, hey, the motor officer usually sits in this spot, so people change their own driving behavior once they get used to it. I'm sure we can all go with the idea when you're coming into Simi Valley on the freeway, when CHP sits right there on the side of the freeway, everybody knows where that is. Everybody's going to slow down, even if they're there or not, until you see that. So we're hoping with the motors, they can do the same thing. Motor officers, also, they blend into traffic easier, making it easier for motor officers to observe violations. to observe violations, easier maneuver through traffic to catch violators. Even though they're big motorcycles, they're still smaller than cars and most people aren't looking for them. And then when they do see a violation with all the traffic that we do have on our streets and our roads, it's very hard for a police car to catch up without causing a major traffic issue, but the motorcycles are very easy to get through traffic and go stop a violator. They have quicker response due to the ability to maneuver through traffic, so any kind of emergency situation, they can get through traffic pretty quick. And they're part of the three E's of traffic safety, which is education, enforcement, and engineering. So education, anytime they pull someone over, they're doing enforcement, but they're also doing education because they can give a warning and educate someone about what they did wrong. They can issue a citation, which is enforcement. But they also help us with engineering because they're out there, they're driving the roads, they know what's safe, they know what needs to be changed, and we have regular conversations with our traffic engineering here at the city to determine best ways to improve roadways and help with everything, all the traffic in the city. So just some quick citation data, 2015, when we had a lot of, five motors, we had over 3,000 citation issued for the year. As you see, as the years go down, 2020, you can see a drop even when we had four motor officers, that was only 1,000 citations, that was during COVID times for a couple of years. Now we're currently at one motor officer, and from January through July, just that one motor officer by himself has written already 445 citations. So the duties of a motor officer, enforcement of primary collision factors, which is going out there, finding the violations which we most commonly occur in traffic collisions, and they're trying to prevent those from occurring, speeding, running red lights, running stop signs, unsafe turns at intersections, violations like that. They also do driving under the influence enforcement, so our motor officers are out there when they're not enforcing or writing citations. They should be out there looking for your DUIs, your impaired drivers. And they're also helping with collision investigations as needed. So our motor officer training requirements, this is pre-going to a post-certified motor training school. They must possess a valid motorcycle endorsement, must have physical ability to pick up and fall a motorcycle, must be able to center stand a motorcycle. There's a vehicle code which requires that a motorcycle, a person riding a motorcycle, legs must be sufficiently linked to place both feet on the ground, and then they must successfully complete the motor school prior to us ordering any of the specialized equipment. As you'll see in a little bit in our slide, and like you've already obtained, this equipment is pretty expensive, but it's all for the safety of the rider. Once they're done with the post-motor school, they're going to ride with a current motor officer, which is Officer Bowman, our only one, for a minimum of 80 hours prior to being assigned to solo enforcement duties. So prior to going to motor school, they're going to have 120 hours of just getting used to the motorcycle, getting used to what's going to be going in the school, which is approximately three weeks. Then they're going to go to a post-certified motor school, which is another two weeks, where they're learning code patterns, learning how to control the motorcycle, and then learning how to ride through traffic, all kinds of different conditions. And then once they're even done with that, a minimum of 80 hours. So you're looking at at least seven to eight weeks of training before this person's even out there on his own, being able to do any kind of solo enforcement activity. After completing the 80 hours and on the direction of the motor training officer, the traffic supervisors will conduct an overall evaluation of their performance and either approve for solo enforcement duty or recommend additional training. They can have their training extended, and they're subject to a one-year probation period from the date they begin their 80-hour post-motor school training period. So these are just some of the required motor officer training courses that we already have in our Bureau orders. So they got to go to a post-basic motor course, quarterly motorcycle refresher course, standardized filter sobriety test training, A-RIDE, advanced roadside impaired driving education training, drug alcohol recognition training, radar, LIDAR training, basic, intermediate, and advanced collision investigation, and then also commercial vehicle enforcement training. Because all the construction we do and the trucks that we have driving through town, they're a good resource to be able to make sure there's no unsafe commercial vehicles driving around, causing hazards. Some of the policy additions that we're going to put in our, not policy, but Bureau conditions, we're going to add to it, is the three weeks training with the certified motor officer instructor prior to going to the course. We're going to do a yearly mandatory motor qualification course, which is like the post cone pattern, which all the officers have to pass in the post-school. To be able to pass the school, if they can't do the cone pattern successfully, then they won't make it through the post-school. So we're going to make sure our officers can continue to do that while they're out riding and doing their enforcement duties. If they don't pass the first time, we'll get them as much remediation as we can and get them, you know, feeling comfortable on it, and then we'll give them another attempt to pass the cone pattern. And then every two years, we're going to attempt to send them to a post-certified motorcycle update course. So for tonight, what we're action items that we're looking for is phase one is recruiting a, for one motor officer position, funding to send them to post-certified motor course, and then purchase the required equipment and uniforms for the officer, which is, the motor course itself is about $2,500, the uniform equipment around $7,000. So just to get one up and running for that bike that we already have sitting down there with nobody on it that's gathering dust, it'll be about a $9,500 investment to just get the one officer through school and then outfitted with the proper gear to be safe. And what we're looking for also tonight is approval to purchase three additional BMW motorcycles, they're approximately $37,000 each, recruit and select for two more motor officer positions, send them to post-certified motor school, purchase all the required equipment for them, and the total cost being approximately $130,000. Once we get those two positions filled, we'll have our four motor officers out working the streets, ready to go. Just a quick update, we also have a dual-sport motorcycle enforcement unit. This is an ancillary assignment, so people, these are off-road motorcycles that can go patrol the hills. If we're having issues in the hills, they can get to places like through the wash pretty quick. So their primary mission is provide cities rural, cities rural undeveloped and off-highway areas with law enforcement. Their special motorcycles usually used for patrols or directed enforcement. It's an ancillary assignment currently consisting of four police officers who are supervised by the traffic bureau sergeant, who are deployed on an as-needed basis. The unit is for off-road enforcement, homeless intervention, special event security, and search and rescue. These officers assigned to this ancillary assignment attend a post-approved 80-hour dual-purpose motorcycle training course. They do yearly training at locations authorized for legal operation of off-road motorcycles, and they can do additional training throughout the year within Simi Valley jurisdiction where enforcement activities can occur. So currently, the equipment that we have, we have two 2014 KTM 500 dual-sport motorcycles, 2016 Hux Fana dual-sport motorcycle. These are commonly referred to as like enduro motorcycles, they have on-road and off-road capabilities. Their suspension and tires are set up more for off-road than what a normal street enforcement motorcycle would be. They're equipped to handle all types of terrains, and they're easy maneuver and can drive over curbs, small alleyways, parking lots, apartment complexes, and traditional areas where police enforcement motorcycles can't go or vehicles could go. And that concludes my presentation. Commander Liu and I are here if there's any questions.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only had two questions, and one might be directed more towards the DA's, but this money that you're asking for, it's two-part. Where will it come from and will it affect other programs? So I don't think it's coming out of your already existing budget.
That's correct. It's, so part of the money will be coming from, I believe forfeited, I think there's an allocation out of forfeited assets, and then we have money coming out of the general fund balance.
Okay.
Yep.
And the last one is, how long does it take to fulfill an order for one of these new motorcycles?
So we spoke with the BMW retailer that is in town, the one that we use, it's in Newberry Park, actually. Realistically, he was saying if we were to put our order in in October, we're looking five to six months realistically before we could get, just because there's a backorder on the police motorcycles right now.
So that's a good use of the phase one, phase two. One, we can get stood up, and the others, we can train as we go.
Yep.
Got it? Cool, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Councilmember Litzner.
Thank you, Officer Bowman. Appreciate your report. And I have a few questions, and one that we had a constituent write-in question, and maybe I'll tailor them with what he asked, and I don't have it right in front of me, but one of his questions dealt with staffing. Where are we looking to hire new recruits? Is this placement from within the force already? What are you envisioning with this?
So the traffic bureau is already down vacancies.
Sure.
And so this is just going to increase our, the traffic bureau's vacancy. So we're not increasing the departments.
So you're not transferring, so you don't have any current officers that say, I have always wanted to be a motor, and so now I'm going to, I'd like to apply?
Yes.
This is internal.
Yeah.
This is internal, okay. This is internal, okay. Thank you.
The size of the force is not increasing.
Okay.
Yes.
So all three is internal then?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. And then the constituent wrote in, his question was, okay, if it's internal, where, what areas are they coming from and what responsibilities would be changing or would not be filled?
You want me to answer that? Okay. So we're allotted 123 officers. We're about 118 right now. What happens is, is when we have a specialized position open, whether it's in detectives, whether it's in the motor unit or anywhere else on the department, we make sure that our basic traffic, our basic, excuse me, staffing needs are met, you know, in operations and patrol and in detectives, and we make sure that we have the numbers to fill it. So because people are always cycling in and cycling out, people are always in the police academy on field training, we should have a steady flow of new officers coming in, which would not qualify for a specialized position like that, but we have more than enough people that are interested in being in the unit. And so we anticipate by just the natural matriculation, if you would, that we're going to be able to get the unit fully staffed within the year.
Okay, wonderful. And just, thank you, that's helpful for me to understand that. I know that in the past, I recognize that this is a dangerous assignment or can be, I mean, officers are exposed. Is there, I know we're doing additional training to make it as safe as possible, from a city perspective and cost perspective and workman's compensation perspective, is there a tremendous cost to, that is perceived to go in this route with our officers, at least with maybe workman's compensation or some of the concerns about injury, et cetera?
There could be costs regarding workers' compensation, but that's, it's a, it's part of the job and it's part of what we do. So we're, the rates we pay are already factoring in that we have motor officers. So there initially won't be any increase in what we're paying.
Got it. Well, and I appreciate the fact that if you explained, there's going to be ongoing testing too, which keeps the officers in peak performance, I recognize.
There's a substantial amount of changes in the way that the motor unit is, the competencies, the safety engineering, the way that we're going to run the unit compared to in the past. And we believe by making sure that we have mandatory skill testing every year, you know, one of the things that I have to stress as the leader of the department about that, I don't want risk-taking behavior. We don't expect a motor officer to pursue vehicles at unreasonable speeds, jeopardize the public and themselves. And, you know, what we want to do is we want to get out there and we want to look for meaningful work, we want to create, you know, a safe traffic atmosphere, but we also want to do it safely. There's just inherent risk, you have to understand, with police and fire service, we can't eliminate all that, but we certainly can take some pragmatic steps to make sure we're doing our best.
Thank you. That's helpful. And actually, one question came up with your presentation. At the very end, you shared the off-road bike that we have available and what it can be used for. And I gather, if I understand correctly, it is, is it the same officers that were part of that, or is that a different group that would, that use the off-road bikes?
Currently, right now, there's, Officer Bowman is the only motor officer we have, and he is part of that team. So the other three that are on the ancillary team aren't doing the.
Got it.
At this time. They could put in for the unit when we open it, I just don't know yet.
Understood. And the question that in my mind actually came up, I understand that we also have e-bikes, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Obviously different than motorcycles, I recognize that.
Complete different training and yes.
Okay. And so, and I just wondered if they were ever used interchangeably, but obviously they're different beasts. Fair enough. Okay. Thank you for your information. Appreciate it.
Mayor Proterm judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very impressed by the training criteria in this. This is great. Just a real quick question, is this a different training country or the one we had before?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to this program going forward.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. Somebody expressed a concern that we're putting motors out there to make money. So I know that's not true, Chief, but I want to give you the opportunity to cover that a little bit, if you could.
I'm going to keep my humor out of, we probably don't get the money we're entitled to, that's a whole nother discussion. The bottom line is, why the motorcycles are out there is to provide high-visibility patrol to affect people or try to condition them to drive safely. There are no statistics. I don't require statistics. In fact, at the beginning of this process, I brought the applicants in and made it real clear as about what my expectations are. And what that is, is to go out and do meaningful work, solve problems. If they stop a violator, they're police officers, they have the discretion. If a warning is all that's needed, that satisfies me, we'll document the warning. If something is truly unsafe and the violator needs a citation, we'll do that. If there's time and we're at a school zone and the school staff is having a hard time directing traffic, I expect them to get off the bike and help direct traffic. That's what I mean about meaningful work. Traffic is one of the primary elements of community policing and engagement and outreach, and it doesn't necessarily have to be punitive like people believe it can be, but certainly it's not, the purpose is not to raise funds.
Thank you, Chief.
And if I may follow up on that, the email that the council received on that forfeited assets was going up, actually, it's going down by 31%. He was making a comparison of what we actually collected last year, estimated of 200,000, and we're budgeting 300,000, but we had budgeted 400, almost $450,000. So it's actually going down, it's not going up.
Mayor Proterm judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We don't want to have to give a dissertation of how much money the state takes from our financing, from our citations.
That's where I was going to go, sir, I'll be honest. I was going there.
Situations are not to make money. I just wanted to thank Sergeant McAllister for wearing the cancer awareness colors on his uniform. That's outstanding. Thank you.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yeah, one other question, Chief. As you rethought this, reinvented this program, what's one thing you're most proud of, the biggest change that you would say for this program?
Well, I think, you know, one thing that touched me deeply is the desire of the officers to see it come back and understanding the effectiveness of it and how it can benefit the community. As you know, most of the officers live in the community, so that's important. But I think our stamp as supervision and command staff is the safety engineering, the training, and redefining the purpose, right? And making sure that everybody knows we're out there just to make the community safer. And in my building, we've all bought off on that.
I don't really have any questions, so I think I've shared all of mine already at length over the past couple of months. But I think the end goal, when it's all said and done, is fewer accidents.
Correct.
Safer community.
Correct.
I did have one question, I was curious, which Simi Valley port those photos were from?
So you want to tell the story how we wound up.
How did you get them all there?
With motorcycles on a aircraft carrier, Josh?
It was a regional training day. It's part of that yearly update training that they get to go to.
So there are several other agencies that were down in San Diego, and the bikes were trailer down there, and they participated in training down there several years ago. So we figured you would love that photo.
That was great. Thank you. And thanks for all the work you guys did to make this happen.
Mr. Mayor, if you're ready, I'll make a motion.
Yes.
I move to approve supplemental budget request to Fund 100 to authorize the police department to fund training costs, the purchase of motor officer gear and protective equipment, and three BMW police motorcycles for three new motor officers at a total estimated cost of $139,500.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 10A, City Council member reports.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since our last meeting, we, let's see, I had my rotary meeting, that doesn't count. Wednesday, September 27th, I bookended the day, started with the Chamber of Commerce Legislative Affairs Zoom call, where we're following different bills, and ended the day with you all at the presidential debate at the Reagan Library. And I think that this is a time to emphasize once again what a jewel the library is as a venue to be able to put on and host events like this, what an economic boon for. what an economic boon for Simi Valley to have these type of events in our place. And, and it was actually, other than the fact that we couldn't see the stage from where we were sitting, it was an outstanding event. I heard it was really, really good. Let's see, on Thursday, September 28th, we had our first ad hoc committee meeting for talking about the amphitheater. Councilwoman Litzler and I met and talked about that. And then at 5:00 PM, we all gathered again, you'll probably hear, to do the city volunteer dinner, where the volunteers of our community risked their lives to be served by us. And, and it was a great event celebrating all the good work that people, people did. And that, also that night, we had our closed session here at City Hall. The Saturday, September 30th, it was on my calendar, and I did not attend the annual Banana Festival, for which I am very, very disappointed. I was looking forward to it, but someone did.
She had, no, I didn't, but she had about 8,000 people there.
So that was an oversight, I'd planned to go to that. On Sunday, October 1st, the 30th anniversary celebration of the Samaritan Center. A grand event, well-attended, and they raised a bunch of money. I need to give a shout out to the Rotary Club of Simi Valley, which I happen to be the president of, and the Rotary Foundation of that club, where we took the opportunity to announce a $25,000 donation to the Samaritan Center at that event, which will go a long way for their next 30 years. And Thursday, October 5th, a long day downtown with the Southern California Association of Governments meetings on the Community Economic and Human Development Committee, and also the Regional Council. One of the main orders of business there was the allocation of funding, of which the County of Ventura County is being very active, and I need to find out who these folks are, at getting submissions in and money through SCAG. There is a lot of funding to be done for both transport, transportation and housing, and Ventura County is doing a great job of that. Following the SCAG meetings, I had a meeting at the Clean Power Alliance. And the Clean Power Alliance, the, the things of note there is that they've actually got a now good credit rating, an investable-grade credit rating, so they can actually get money cheaper, which I don't know how you do cheaper than bonds that you don't have to pay back, but I'm still trying to figure that out. And, and I also had the, the the impromptu opportunity to speak with our new city attorney, Al Ford, and get to know him a little bit better. So welcome aboard, sir. Sunday, October 7th, I did attend the Celebration of Life for Pat Montoya, the founder of Not One More. It was an incredibly moving experience. A shout out to our Police Department chaplain. Thank you for emceeing that event and leading that event. Very tastefully, wonderfully done. And he is a soul that will be missed in our community. But hopefully, we will carry on his good work. Other than that, I had no other meetings, but I did want to take the opportunity to acknowledge what's going on in the world today. And I was asked by a constituent if I would make sure that I made a comment that I stood with Israel. And to that, to that person who was asked and to all those concerned, yes, I would say that we should denounce terrorism in all of its forms, hatred in all of its forms. And I absolutely think that we should stand with one of our absolute best allies in the region and stand with Israel. With that, I'm completing my report.
Councilmember Litzler.
Thank you, Councilmember Rhodes, appreciate it. So on Thursday, well, actually, our last council meeting was September 25th, and I think we all actually spoke with the Garity Group on that time and got some insights about plans for the, or thoughts for the Simi Town Center. But on September 28th, actually, let me go back to September 27th, Wednesday. I concur, all of us, of course, were invited, which was quite, to attend the presidential debate at the Reagan. And I was actually surprised and delighted to be invited. And it was quite, it was very informative and very interesting for me to attend. And I will say that I actually left thinking that there are some very intelligent people who'd like to be president of our country. But it was, anyway, I appreciate that we live in a community where events of this magnitude can, has a place and can be, and can be enjoyed by all. And so, anyway, thank you to the Reagan Library for putting that together. On Thursday, September 28th, yes, I did meet with, on our ad hoc committee, and very much enjoyed it, appreciated our initial forays into conversation, and looking forward to follow-up conversation tomorrow with another meeting. Also, appreciate the volunteer dinner. It was, you mentioned taking their life in their hands by being served for us. I will not mention the chicken juice I splashed all over one sweet volunteer, who didn't, who did not complain. But my apologies publicly, you know who you are. That weekend, actually, I was not able to attend the anniversary celebration of the Samaritan Center because I was visiting my parents in Idaho. And you'll appreciate this, instead of attending the annual Banana Festival, I was making apple cider out of an apple press, an Amish apple press. It took us all day, we got 80 gallons of apple cider in my parents' backyard. So that was my, that was my fun weekend activity up in Idaho, visiting them with family. On Thursday, October 5th, I too attended the SCAG meetings in downtown Los Angeles. I'm a member of the Energy and Environment Committee and wanted to share just some of the things that came out of that meeting. Actually, the first thing is they were discussing agenda items, and I brought it to the attention of the committee that we were the Energy and the Environment Committee, and it seemed like we spent 99% of our time talking about the environment, which is critical. And really, no conversation about energy and its different ways that we can help the environment and different resources and different avenues. And the presenter responded, well, we do have an agenda item to talk about battery storage. And I said, that is a start, but that isn't, that, that, there's much more to energy. And so, anyway, there was concurrence, and I think that the committee will be more focused in discussions that also include our energy alternatives, not just one route, because it's going to take all that we have, I think, to truly be successful. That was one item that came out of that. The second thing that I wanted to share was that the Orange County Sustainability Decathlon is going on, and if you're interested in making a drive down to Orange County, it would be fascinating. At the Orange County Fair and Event Center in Costa Mesa, they actually have 14 collegiate teams have designed and built sustainable homes that are being judged on which are the most sustainable. And so it's, so you can go in and see and tour these 14 homes. And I think it would be fascinating to see all the different inventions that have come up that will provide everything from efficient energy and water use conservation and comfort. Anyway, so I can tell you that that's going on right now. So don't miss it if you have that, if you'd like to. It started, it was open to public October 5th and 8th, but it continues, obviously, October 12th and 15th. So that's something that would be fun to attend. The other thing that was discussed, and I think Councilmember Rhodes alluded to some of this, is that going on that there are some real pushes for grant funding. And I know that our city has been very involved in, in procuring grants in various efforts, and I commend our, I commend all those who are doing that. But I want, let me get to the right one, not. Basically, the, this is, and I can send this to those who might be interested. Basically, our, through the Inflation Reduction Act and through the efforts of basically EPA, they are, they have $5 billion in grant money that they're trying to get rid of, excuse me, that they're trying to give away before the end of this administration, or, excuse me, before the end of next year. I'm sorry, I should be, in terms of, and so, I just want to make people aware that basically the timeline is, and so, and basically, these are grants that are designed to prove that they would be reducing climate and air pollution. So if we have anything designed that, in our city, whether it be buses, et cetera, that would be towards reducing air pollution, there is money and funds to be had, and also that grants that would support jobs and lower energy costs. And so those are some of the objectives. But the timeline, this is just what I found fascinating, is that basically, the grants have to be in by the first of the year, and the funds, and the funds will be distributed by the middle of the year, and they want actually implementation happening by the end of next year. I'm getting there, just the timeline is very, very quick. But anyway, I'd be happy to share some of the details of that if anyone's interested with our city. And hopefully, we avail ourselves of some of those grants. That evening, attended the little, actually, I can't miss, at 1:00, I had the distinct pleasure of meeting our new city attorney, Mr. Al Ford. Thank you. And I think I got to be the first on the dais to sit down and actually shake hands. I was tempted to ask him questions like cities population, some of that, but I refrained, and instead, we had a very, a very good conversation about legal issues and, and some of the things that the city needs to go forward with. And so, thank you for your time, appreciate your being here with us. That evening, a little black dress event, Ser Optimus held. Thank you to that organization for all the funds that they raised for women's issues. And I think that was a very successful event, and I know that there were, Mike Judge on the dais, who donated his time to make that successful. And I know, DeeDee, you were there as well. Anyway, a very lovely event. On Saturday, I too attended the Celebrating the Light of Pat Montoya, I'm holding up the program from that beautiful event. And I wanted, again, also to commend Janet Saggy, Chaplain Janet, for, for her beautiful remarks that was beautifully done and for helping to coordinate and make that such a special event. So thank you. I will tell you that I actually didn't stay for the whole thing because then I dashed off to attend the memorial service for Ed Huntley, who was a wonderful member of our community, who, a quiet man, who did much, loved old cars and, and worked on cars, just a gentle giant in our community. And so, we've lost some good, good men here. So today, Monday, I did attend the Council on Aging and wanted to just make actually a quick report on some of the things that they discussed because I think they are important for our community. First of all, they hold about over $471,000 in assets, and they're looking for a way to put them in interest-bearing accounts. And so that was discussed, that in the next meeting, hopefully, they will, that they will find ways to, to grow that, those funds. But also, they discussed, this Thursday is their Oktoberfest. Everyone is invited, they'd love us to come, Thursday at the Senior Center. They're, thirdly, they are in the, in the middle of recruiting members for the Council on Aging. They actually have five openings. And so now is the time to get your applications in. They do lots of wonderful, good work, but, and those application period closes the middle of November. And then finally, I just wanted to end, re-mention a couple more of the events that they have coming up in October. Friday, October 13th, is the Council on Aging Dance, in case anyone here qualifies and would like to go dancing. Friday, October 13th. And then their Beautiful Arts and Crafts Fair, October 20th and 21st, is taking place here at the Cultural Arts Center. And beautiful, all handmade items by members of our community. And so, just a wonderful way to shop for, for gifts and to have a beautiful time together. So wanted to appreciate all the efforts of what our Council on Aging and our Senior Center does. And I too am very sorry with our recent international events. And so, I conclude my report, thank you.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Prior to our meeting on September 25th, I forgot to mention that I did meet with a developer regarding a potential project here in Simi Valley. On Wednesday, September 27th, I, along with the rest of the council, attended the presidential debate. Once again, we get to show off our wonderful Presidential Library up on the Hill. It, and it showed off wonderfully. We could not see anything, but we had great views out the door, or out the windows. What was really nice is I sat next to our fire chief, Dustin Gardner, and that was the first time I met him. And so we were chit-chatting, and he was so happy to see a slight green haze still on all those, he called them canyons, he goes, there's Canyon 1, and that's Canyon 2, and that's Canyon, I'm like, okay. But he was very happy to see that, that green haze. And I've noticed it a lot, usually at this time of the year, it's so brown, you can't see anything else. But there is still a nice little green haze out there on our mountains, so let's keep that going. And thank you to the library for inviting us and hosting us that evening. On Thursday, September 28th, I also, with the rest of the council, attended the volunteer dinner, but I did not spill any food on anybody. That's because I had the rolls. So I, you know, I grabbed the rolls first. I know a safe object, you know, a safe thing to serve when, when I'm serving. So, and I got to give them two if they wanted to. Once again, it was our local, one of our local restaurants that served the food, or that brought the food, so very appreciative. Those volunteers do so much for our community. I don't think the average person even realizes they volunteer throughout the entire community, not just Simi Valley city stuff. I mean, it, there's, and there's a lot of the same people, a lot of new people, and they just like to see the city council and the chief and whoever else and the city manager, you know, putting food on their plates for them. They get a kick out of that. And then there's a lot of little raffle items and such. And we get to hand-deliver those to the winners, and that's always a lot of fun. Let's see. On Monday, October 2nd, myself, along with Mayor Protem Judge, did neighborhood council interviews. It went very well, we had a lot of great people. So I think they've been notified or not notified yet, as to, they've been notified as to who's been selected. We had a great turnout. Mike and I had it very easy on his, because there weren't as many people. On my district, it was very difficult because we had extra people, you know, so we had to kind of pick and choose, but I think we did a good job on who we chose. So good luck to all of them, and I look forward to, to attending a meeting to introduce myself to those I don't know. On Wednesday, October 4th, I had my executive board for the EDC, the Economic Development Collaborative. We have a lot of good things going on. We have an award dinner next week, or the week after, I think it's next week, that I'll be attending. I love being the chair of the EDC this year. We have gotten so many awards. I've done nothing to earn any of them, but the staff has won like four prestigious awards. And it's just really, really good. It's going to look good on my resume when, when I'm done at the end of the year. So I keep telling them that, you guys are making me look good. So I'm really excited about that, and I'll bring back a little bit more information on that afterwards. Thursday, October 5th, again, Ser Optimus Thursday, October 5th, again, Ser Optimus did their annual Little Black Dress. It's a great event. For those of you that don't know, it's an event for the ladies in town. Everyone dresses up, or dresses down, or casual, in little black dresses or pants, whatever you're comfortable in. And we have male volunteers from the community, are our waiters. And Mayor Pro Tem Judge was the bartender this year. Well, I think he was last year, too. Okay, I remember that. And the mayor was there also. But it's really a good time, and we get to kind of have a lot of fun with each other, and you meet people you may not have met before. And everyone just really has a good time, and we raise, Ser Optimus raises a lot of money for all the wonderful things they do for the women in the community, in the, in the country, and for all different, various things that they support. They're a great community. The mayor's former wife was one of the founding president, so I think it has a special place in his heart, along with some of all the others. It was a wonderful, wonderful group of ladies, and they have continued on, and they just get better and better every year. On Friday, October 6th, oh, my highlight was, I also got to have a call, phone call with our new city attorney, Mr. Al Ford. It was wonderful. He opened up the call with, hi, happy to meet you. And I'm like, I like this. I got some energy. It was great. So thank you very much. I really enjoyed that. I was disappointed that the bakery's grand opening was postponed. I had that on my calendar. So it was like, okay. And I think that was about it. That's it, that's it for my report. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, September 28th, I too attended the city volunteer dinner, and I always enjoy that event. And you're right, our volunteers do a great job for our city, and we couldn't say enough good things about them. Thank you all for doing your volunteer work, and I look forward to seeing you guys next year. After the volunteer dinner, I too attended the special closed session city council meeting. On Sunday, October 1st, I attended the celebration of the Samaritan Center's 30-year anniversary. Great job. I'm glad they raised a lot of money. On Monday, October 2nd, as been mentioned, I did help with the Neighborhood Council's 1 and 2 selection, and I'm very impressed by the people that came out to be on our Neighborhood Councils, and I think we did make great selections for those positions. On Wednesday, October 4th, I attended SCAG Executive Action Committee, and there were four, I'm on four committees with SCAG, or three, I'm sorry. The executive, the transportation, and the regional council. All three of those meetings, or all three of those agendas had one significant item on the agenda, and I've distributed that to the entire council. Basically, it is the state's plan, or what we believe is going to be the state's plan going forward with a road use tax. Right now, the state of California is in dire need of changing the way they tax your vehicles through registration because of the lack of fuel being used by electronic vehicles and other zero emission vehicles, because they had to change the branding from electrification to zero emissions. So that means something That was very important. So that has been distributed to all the council members, and I think it's very significant. Make sure you read that and check it out, because that's what's coming. It's not like, it's not like a dream now. It's something that's going to come down. And I think all the citizens should be made aware of that, too. On Thursday, October 5th, again, I attended the SCAG, the two SCAG meetings I had to go to. That was probably the most significant part, other than the SCAG does have a lot of money in their, in their grants. VCTC has taken advantage of a couple of them. I'm hoping Simi Valley can too, especially for this stuff. I don't know if it's too late for us to talk about our batteries and solar stuff for some of that thing, but if it's not, we should put in for that. Thursday, October 5th in the evening, I did attend the Little Black Dress. Very impressed with the Ser Optimus. Always, they do a great job on their event. The ladies there were very happy. They were buying stuff at the auction, donating money. It was great to see. And their money, like has been said by a couple of other council members up here, goes to great causes, to forward women in business, forward women in education, a lot of things. So if you haven't heard of Ser Optimus, look them up, and if you have the opportunity, donate. On Friday, October 6th, I attended the Ventura County Transportation Committee meeting in Camarillo. Not too much really new out of that. We were trying to push for the regional transportation, in other words, making it more of a bus system that would serve maybe East County and West County, instead of just every city having its own bus system. That way, it makes a lot of sense in my mind as far as control, cohesion, your ability to go from one place to another without having to change buses six times. It didn't fly. So that's, I'm going to leave that at right there. They're coming up with some other plans. We're going to look at doing the same type of system with paratransit. Hopefully, that won't meet as much resistance. I'm looking forward to seeing the outcome of that. Later that day, I, I too was very happy to meet with our new city attorney, Al Ford, over the phone. We had a great conversation. I happened to be on my way out of the state, and I was out of state until an hour before this council meeting. So that's the end of my report. Thank you very much.
Okay. I'm going to go back to Monday, the 25th, where we had a chance to meet with developer that was, or at least a potential buyer for the mall site, to talk about what their plans were. I have nothing to report on that, but it was an interesting meeting. September 27th, attended the presidential debate at the Ronald Reagan Library. Was a, it was a busy place. A very cool event to attend. I felt a little bad. I feel like somehow or another, I cheated Bob Uecker out of his seat. Some of you probably got that. On Thursday, 28th, the city volunteer dinner was, what a great thing to do, to recognize those that volunteer to help the city. And, you know, it's just an example of this, of what, one of the things that makes Simi, Simi, is the number of people in this community that volunteer their time, get involved in their community. It's really, it's really fantastic. Let's see here. Sunday, October 1st, attended the 30th anniversary celebration of the Samaritan Center. Great organization, and this was the first time they've done something like that, and I think they, they did a good job. And Mayor Pro Tem Judge and I called up to accept a, an award on behalf of the city for our support of the organization. Let's see here. Thursday, October 5th, had a chance to meet with our new city attorney, Al Ford. Great meeting. Hit it off right away, and welcome.
Thank you.
And then later that evening, the Little Black Dress, yes, that is very close to my heart. I remember back when my late wife returned from going to a Santa Clarita Ser Optimus meeting with Vanessa Wilk. She said, this was an amazing group, and I want to make this happen in Simi Valley. So she contacted National, got the information, had me do the research on forming, you know, a nonprofit, and she went to work recruiting members to, you know, for the original board, and to see that organization explode like it did into this town, and has been like on fire ever since. And so I, I can't help myself. I always have to go and support them, and it really is a great event. Matter of fact, it's even better now that it's not in my backyard. When it, when it reached 250 people, I told them, no more. And then, a sad, sad day on Saturday, attending the Celebration of Life for Pat Montoya, Pat Montoya. Really amazing guy, made a difference in a lot of people's lives, close to my heart, the work he did in drug education. But not only that, but working with, with people that were fighting addiction, and families that were dealing with, loved one with addiction, and just a really great guy, and a really sad thing. And that is it for my report. So, I'm going to adjourn tonight's meeting. Oh, yeah. Oh, yes. Thank you. Do I have any additional agenda items? Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say also, I forgot to say it during my closing comments here, but I wanted to wish everybody Happy Indigenous People Day and Happy Columbus Day. And I also want to say, just like Rocky did, I do stand with Israel. I hope they get through this. Their loss of life compared to 9/11 is actually greater than our loss of life during 9/11 because of the size of Israel. It's hard to really comprehend the size of that country. When you talk about the fighting, it was 30 miles away from their largest city, Tel Aviv. I really feel for them, and I hope they can, I don't know what else. It's just horrible what happened. It would move me the same exact way 9/11 did. So I just wanted to get that off my chest. Thanks.
Okay. All right. So with that, I'm going to adjourn in memory of Senator Dianne Feinstein, Chad Swanson, Manhattan Beach Police Officer, Edward Huntley, and Peter Bruno, Jeanette Holt's father. She was a former Public Works Administrative Assistant. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Have a nice evening.